Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we ask you to watch over all the residents of this city, guide the members of council's minds and spirits as we pass legislation which affects them, and please be with the administration as they enforce the ordinances that we enact. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nefer.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Teppin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. There are no amendments to tonight's agenda, so we will move directly to the privilege of the floor. We have two speakers under privilege of the floor. The first is Mr. Tim Guthrie. I will remind both members or both people that are speaking that council rules permit three minutes. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Tim Guthrie, 121 Belvidere, Lima, Ohio. First thing I want to do is let everybody know that if Mayor Berger gets reelected for this term he's in right now, and for the next one, he's going to make $980,000 for eight years. $980,000. How many people in here are going to make $980,000 in eight years? For starters. Okay, I was out cleaning my catch basin in front of my house the other day, two weeks ago, Sunday morning, and two neighbors walked by. And I'm a shovel, wheelbarrow, and rake. And they joke about me doing city work. And as soon as Deb said that, she spit out, "Can you believe how much money Mayor Berger's making?" And I said, "Deb, don't even get me started, because you've all seen me up here before." And then she said, "City council's corrupt." I swear on the Bible she said that. And then we started having conversations. She said, "City council's corrupt because you're letting Mayor Berger make all that money." Now, Mr. Nixon, I was up here three times last year. And I asked you three times to roll Mayor Berger's salary back, to put, stop the automatic 3% raise. And I wanted term limits. And you never said a word. I asked you three different times I was up here. I asked you to tell me. I asked you to let the people vote on it. If you guys didn't, if city council didn't want to do what I asked, let them vote on it. Last November 6th, presidential election, I said there'll be a lot of people. Nobody got a chance to vote on it. And... So, Mr. Nixon, I have to ask you why you wouldn't let nobody vote. And I've asked myself that many times. And the only thing I can think of is, are you running for mayor in four years? Because I think you are. And I think that's the reason that you wouldn't let us vote on it. Now, that's my opinion. And that's my prediction. You're running for mayor in four years. And if you do run for mayor in four years, your first year's salary's going to be $139,500 for four year, for one year, $139,000. And your first raise, your first raise will be $4,186. A $4,000 raise. It's up to $4,000 when you, when you run. And your total for four years is going to be $583,000. For four years, that's taxpayers' money. $583,000 for four years.
Mr. Guthrie, your three minutes are up. Thank you.
What?
Your time is up, three minutes.
Is it?
Thank you.
You're not going to extend it for me?
No.
Why not?
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Our next speaker is Felicia Spalding.
Good evening. I'm Felicia Spalding. I live at 645 West Sam Street. I'm in here regards to circumstances facing my mother's and him home, not just my mother's home, but also other people's home in the community. I have a letter that's been written out to the community, to churches, and businesses.
Excuse me. We have a speaker who's trying to address us. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Spalding, but this, I'm, thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, issues concerning the home, and not just our home, but other residents' home in the community. In this letter, it states where my parents had purchased services through the government program through subsidized loans. They had to put a roof over their house, and the roof had, was sit on top of two or three other roofs. The insurance would not cover us. They said it's faulty maintenance. Not just in my home, but there are other people from electrical wiring, different programs they use. It was, they got loans through LAC or some of the programs. That's one of the programs that we use. I have tried to find out what we can do to resolve this issue, to get help, but I have not been able to get anywhere. And the roofs, the ceiling fell in, the roof fell in, my mother fell twice in the home. We had to take her out of the home. And now she's back in the home, but we need to have this situation taken care of as soon as possible. I need to know what I can do, what kind of help I can get, who I need to talk to, or where I can go to get this resolved. Once again, the insurance will not take care of it. They said it's faulty maintenance. We don't have nothing, I don't understand what that means, because the roof was put on through programs that was paid by government loans. And that's my situation. And again, not just mine, but other people in the community are facing the same issues. And we'd just like to know what we can do to get some help to resolve this issue.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Ms. Spalding, I am going to, we don't normally get into a dialogue, but I am going to ask you, have you had conversations with Amy Odom, Director of Community Development?
Yes, I did. They told me that there was nothing that they could do to help me.
Okay.
And this was last year.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. The consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Item B on the consent calendar be received and filed, and Item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is that Item A be received, filed, and approved, and Item B be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for property maintenance.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for specified classes.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication number two be received and filed, and legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation for the removal of tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication number three be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities requesting legislation to enter into an agreement with System Innovations, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication number four be received and filed, and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number four, and to have the, authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a new permit for Mirage properties at 122 West North Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that Communication number five be received and filed, and the clerk authorized to file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number five, and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a new permit for Vuvachi Cuisine at 59 Town Square.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that Communication number six be received and filed, and the clerk authorized to file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number six, and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with URS Corporation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication number seven be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to sell property from Land Bank Two.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication number eight be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number eight. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes, I'm going to call Amy Odom and Randy. Come up for a minute. Randy? And so what we're going to do is we're going to have Randy explain what this new project's, it's near on Main Street, it's all about. And we want to discuss how many folks over the years was very happy about this project. So, Randy, you can come up and say a couple words.
Okay, by here?
It's okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Glenn. I'd like to introduce our partners on development of the South Main Corridor. On tonight's agenda, the corner, and I apologize, it was a typo in my letter, it is the southwest corner, not to panic the people who live on it, or who have property in the southeast. It is the southwest corner of South Main and Kibbe. The city had acquired those properties through demolition and entered into our land bank. As we have with other properties acquired in the South Main Corridor, we have been actively marketing them for persons who are interested in investment and hope to, after due diligence, come into an agreement to sell those properties. We've been working with Betty and Associates, a group which has significant experience in development, small retail development, and gas station development. And Randy is the architect who is working with them. And if you want to perhaps share with them the designs, is that what you're asking for, Mr. Glenn?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Randy Pleichardt. I'm a native of Lima, Ohio. I have an architecture office in Cincinnati. The project is a convenience store, gas station, and restaurant. I don't know, have you seen anything? This is a kind of a front elevation of the, of what it would look like.
Randy, could you give to us, I can tell this council, okay?
It would actually face the Kibbe Street, Kibbe Street, and the pumps, the gas pumps would be kind of between the restaurant, or the building and Kibbe. There'd be entrances off Main and Kibbe. And we have a site plan as well. If there's any. This is a, showing Kibbe Street style with the gas pumps and the convenience store in the back.
If you want to put it right in front of a podium, that would actually work. I can all see that too. So, thank you.
We estimate the project cost to be about $650,000 with fixtures, and two, or four full-time jobs and two part-time, and as needed. If things go well, probably a few more.
Mr. Glenn, if I may, I'd also like to introduce Mr. Montu Betty. Mr. Betty is actually the developer of the project. The other thing I want to comment about this project is that they have graciously agreed to adhere to the proposed, if you remember, council had looked at us in proposed guidelines for design. Much like our partners at Dollar General, they have committed to putting between $46,000 and $50,000 worth of site improvement into this design, meaning that the materials being used, the brick, the landscaping, the rest of that will be compatible with the other design in that area. Mr. Betty, if you'd want to talk about your investment.
Good evening, Council. My name is Montu Betty, and I have a firm called Betty and Associate. I deal with, I assist a group of investors making all kinds of investments in different communities. And I was here about a month ago, speaking with Ms. Odom about different investments where I learned about this site. And Ms. Odom shared an interest of securing a gas station at this site. And right away, I'd mentioned to her that I'll be very glad to be bringing an investor who will be happy to establish a gas station facility. This facility will be, will be established by a entity, Kentucky Deal Holding LLC, which is an established entity. They own several different sites in Kentucky and Ohio. And this will be their other site. And this will be branded Shell Gas Station, so it'll meet all the new codes and regulations with new canopies and stuff like that. As you can see in the preliminary conceptual drawings, this is just to get you, get you an idea. By no means these are finished drawings. After this meeting this evening, if this is blessed by the council, we will start working towards the construction drawings. The project, like Randy mentioned, the project is anticipated to cost about $650,000. It will create four full-time jobs and two part-time jobs, and as needed. The hours of operation will be between 6:00 AM to 11:00 AM, I'm sorry, 11:00 PM. And as far as being 24 hours open, that will be based on the needs of the community. The gas station is not only a retail convenience store. This will have pretty much everything a convenience store has, along with a carryout restaurant facility, which will have chicken and a few other items that one can just pull up. There will be a drive-through along with, which will be shown, which does show in the construction drawings and in the drawings. I think that's, that's pretty much what I have. And the investors are very excited. And if there's anything else I can answer, I'll be glad to.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I'm glad to see this development coming to the south side of Lima. I do have one concern, though. Would you please consider, looking at your site plan here, would you please consider your exit on the Kibbe Street, I mean, on the Main Street?
Okay.
Right there, the light is less than 30 feet. If that could be moved more south, I'd hate for somebody to turn out and get hit by someone turning right going south on.
Yes, sir. That will be taken into consideration. As I mentioned earlier, these are just conceptual designs. If this is blessed, Randy is going to create a full set of construction drawings, which will have a site plan. And all the egresses will be taken into consideration before a final set of construction drawing is submitted for approval.
Great. Very good. Thank you. Welcome to Lima.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Council.
We are on Communication number eight. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for the 2013 budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Teppin.
I move that Communication number nine be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to advertise and enter into contract for demolition at 134-140 West Circular.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that Communication number 10 be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to submit applications for State Issue One funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that Communication number 11 be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number 11. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 12.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to purchase two emergency generators.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that Communication number 12 be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number 12. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
At this time, I would ask for Mr. Howard Elstro to come forward. I made a phone call to Mr. Elstro. He informed me that the two pieces of equipment, the generators, the $39,000 plus would be going to Central Services, the 67 would be going to the fire station. And I guess my question to you would be, the ones that are coming out, can we use them anywhere else in the city? What do they plan on doing with the other generators?
Mr. President.
Mr. Elstro.
As to the question of reuse of the existing generators, the one at Central Services, we will probably put on govdeals.com. For those of you who want the inside or the first-track information, this is a 1944 Army, maybe Navy surplus generator. We have a hard time keeping it started. So, I doubt if it's going to have much, much value other than scrap. The one at Central Fire Station, though, is a 15-kilowatt propane generator. I have not talked to the chief about this, but I would suggest that it too be placed on govdeals.com as we find that the city gets fairly good value from that outlet. And as well, a 15-kilowatt propane generator, though it's certainly inadequate to operate in any kind of commercial capacity, might be a great machine for home use or farm use or something like that.
Could you explain, so the individuals at home will understand the importance of that generator and what it supplies for the fire department?
Yes. As the public may be aware, they expect to see city services regardless of the weather, the conditions, or whether this entire city is without power. We have known from a couple of recent natural disasters, as far back as 2005 ice storm, and as far as the wind events that we've had the last couple of years, that our facilities are not up to standards. When we have these horrific storms, we still have to operate. We still have to plow snow. We have to clean up trees out of the right of way so AEP Electric can get to those lines and do those repairs. And we have men and equipment that need to come in, grab their vehicles and go, and those vehicles need to be fueled. So, the fueling station at Central Service is not only important to streets, but also fire, police, and other emergency outlets and operators throughout the city. In the instance of the Central Fire Station, the last event we had was the Doracho of, what was that, last year or year before? The 15-kilowatt generator just is insufficient for their needs. They have radio needs. They, the equipment that they purchased now is very electronic-oriented. One of the chief or assistant chief was relaying to me last week that if they leave those apparatuses on the floor for any amount of time and not plugged in, they can come back and find that their batteries have been drained. So, it's not like the old days where you'd park an engine and maybe let it sit for three or four days and start it up and use it. They do need maintenance. You have your breathing apparatus that needs to be recharged in your firehouse. You have air conditioning needs and cooking needs to keep the firemen fed and keep them out responding to emergency during storm and storm and emergency events. So, for those purposes, we've known for a long time we needed this equipment. It's just now that we've been in a financial position that the city can go out, borrow money, and upgrade these facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 13.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to advertise and enter into a contract for the emergency, yes, emergency generator power phase one project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that Communication number 13 be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number 13. Is there any further, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 14.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to purchase a network door access control system from Perry Pro-Tech for the Longham Municipal Building.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that Communication number 14 be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number 14. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 15.
From the City Engineer requesting a list from council members of streets for resurfacing and drainage issues.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that Communication number 15 be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number 15. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
If I could, I'd like to ask Mr. Elstro to continue the discussion we had earlier today concerning the stormwater drainage issue. I know this says resurfacing, but I'm concerned as we go forward with additional paving of streets, the buildup that occurs without raising the sewer drainage. It's probably not in all areas of the city, but it has become an issue in my ward of residents hitting those and causing damage. Mr. Elstro, if you could tell me the steps your department takes in addressing this and raising those?
Mr. Elstro.
Mr. President and Council. Thank you, Ms. Adams. The, the issue with catch basins, sometimes when the street has been built up after resurfacing multiple times, the catch basin is unusually low. In those cases, it can cause damage to vehicles if one would drive their car into that. We try to avoid that. And let me first and foremost let all of you and any of your constituents, if you know of a catch basin that you think is very deep and needs to have attention, please contact the Street Division at 221-5165. That's 221-5165. And report the location of that. We will have Street Division crew go out and take a look at it. And if it is determined that it's deep enough to cause damage, we have a catch basin repair crew which raises those. Now, having said that, most of the streets that we resurface anymore are milled in advance. That's the large machine that you see coming down the street, takes up an inch and a half or two inches of asphalt, and then we put an inch and a half, sometimes two inches, back in its place. What that does is whatever curb profile there is, it, it preserves that curb reveal, as well as it avoids this question that we, this problem that we have of catch basins being very low. In addition to that, I've checked with our engineering crew, and they have confirmed for me the last couple of years. We do have inspectors out. If our inspectors during the paving process note that a catch basin is going to be too deep, they note that to the contractor. Last year, we had Brenneman Contractor on contracted services, and they followed up the paving crew and raised any kind of problems we had last year. This year, there's a provision right in our specifications that if the catch basin is too low, there's a quantity that's been earmarked to raise this catch, raise that catch basin so we avoid that problem. Might interest council, and it might interest the public to know that we have 2,050 catch basins throughout this community. So, do we know the status of each and every one of those? Probably not. There's probably a few out there that do need some attention. So, again, I ask that if motorists or neighbors think there's a problem with that catch basin, call it in at 221-5165. Doesn't mean we'll raise every one. Our engineering stand- Our engineering standard is if it's approximate depth of four to five inches, it probably will be left alone. Other considerations might be how close to a radius is it? Is it closer to a drive path because it's on a radii? Also, how pronounced is the transition from the pavement down to the bottom of the catch basin? If it's very pronounced, like a 90-degree wall, that could cause damage. That would be of concern to us. If it's a more gentle slope and it goes down four or five inches, that would be acceptable. Again, if those are reported to us, we'll go look at them. Anything that we think needs attention, we'll get attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 16.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding contract employees.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that communication 16 be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 16. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 17.
From the Deputy Law Director regarding legislation to enter into a contract with ACI Construction Company.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neber.
I move that communication number 17 be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 17. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have reports of officials. I think the actual speaker is Ms. Nancy Bonifas.
Counsel, Ms. Bonifas is here on behalf of Activate Allen County. Activate Allen County is an organization of which the city is a member, and they have a number of initiatives underway focused on healthy eating, healthy lifestyles, active lifestyles. And part of the, the concern that is part and parcel of this is obviously the issue of smoking. So, Activate Allen County has a number of representatives that are here in the audience along with Ms. Bonifas to discuss this and to ask counsel and the, actually, the entire Allen County community to engage in a substantive way on this issue of the continuing smoking rates in all, all parts of Allen County.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Bonifas.
Mr. President, council members, I want to start out by thank you, thanking you for inviting me here to speak about the issue of tobacco use in Allen County here. As the mayor said, my name is Nancy Bonifas. I'm a registered nurse for 19 years, and I've been a certified tobacco treatment specialist for five years now. And I'm working with the Community Transformation Grant as the Tobacco-Free Living Team Leader. So, first, I just want to inform you of some statistics regarding tobacco use in the county here. 20% of the adults in Allen County are regular tobacco users, and that is anyone over the age of 18. As compared to Ohio overall, Ohio is also at 20%. Allen County is ranked 52nd out of all of the 88 counties in Ohio, so we're right in the middle there. The nationwide rate for tobacco use is at 18%, and that is due in part to communities in California and Nevada where the smoking rates are as low as 13%. The national benchmark that we would like to see in Allen County would be 15%. And 4% of Allen County residents report using smokeless tobacco. That is according to county health rankings from 2011. So, who are the tobacco users? 36% of the Allen County adults with incomes of less than 25% were smokers. And as the income goes up higher, the rate of tobacco use decreases. 80% of Allen County adult smokers reported that they went to quit smoking, which is a huge percentage to me. And 54% responded that they had stopped smoking for at least one day while they were trying to quit. It is the most preventable cause of death and disease. 87% of lung cancer deaths can be attributed to smoking, and I unfortunately took care of a patient in cardiac rehab who had contracted lung cancer but had never smoked a cigarette in her day. However, her husband was a heavy smoker. 30% of all cancer deaths can be attributed to smoking. Male tobacco users have a 23x higher risk of developing lung cancer than the risk is 13x higher for women smokers. Contributes to 15 different types of cancer. Some of these are, you've heard of, some of you may be surprised at, include cervical, oral, esophageal, pancreatic, kidney, bladder. My sister-in-law's father died of nasal cancer from smoking. Cardiovascular-wise, it leads to heart disease, and that encompasses lots of different things, high blood pressure, congestive heart failure, cardiomyopathy. Leads to strokes from hardening of the arteries in the brain, bronchitis, emphysema, which is one of the most debilitating diseases, and COPD. Smokers typically die 13 to 14 years earlier than non-smokers, so we have the subject of shortened lifespan. However, it doesn't always kill. You may have seen the commercials from the CDC where the patients lose their limbs or suffer terrible health problems from their smoking, but they don't necessarily die. The tobacco use causes disability and decreased quality of life due to circulatory problems and amputations. Now, into secondhand smoke, it is known to induce asthma attacks. So, if someone is in a home with a child who has asthma and is smoking, it can induce an asthma attack. It can increase dementia, and 3,400 lung cancer deaths caused by secondhand smoke in the U.S. each year. I was just talking about the woman that I took care of in pulmonary rehab. 46,000 cardiovascular deaths caused by secondhand smoke in the U.S. each year, and remember, those are people that have never used tobacco in their life. But 46,000 of them died from cardiovascular disease simply from exposure to secondhand So, it always comes down to the cost, so let's talk a little bit about dollars and cents. To employ a regular tobacco user, the average cost is an extra $3,400 per year, and that is due to the combined cost of increased healthcare and the decreased productivity, the cost of decreased productivity. Depending on the size of your company, how many employees you have, it can add up to a quarter of a million dollars in unnecessary expenses per year. So, other effects of high tobacco use in the community, of course, it contributes to a high cost for healthcare, and anyone that pays into Medicare or Medicaid is absorbing the costs for those people who use the Medicare and the Medicaid. When a new business considers where they're going to locate, they look at lots of different things. One of the things is the cost of the healthcare in the area. If there's high healthcare costs in the area, they're not so interested in locating to that area anymore. Of course, it will decrease the company's bottom line, increase risk of fire damage for the company, and increase times done cleaning and maintaining the property. This is just an example of some of the cigarette butts that I have picked up in the area. This is a very, very small, small quantity of what I have collected. So, we know what the problem is. It's not a new problem. It's been around forever. What can be done? What can we do about it? CDC has done years and years of research, and what they have found as the most effective strategy for reducing tobacco use is implementing policies and enforcing the policies. Now, there's lots of different policies that you can choose from depending on who you are, what kind of facility you're working in. One would be a tobacco-free campus policy. And when I say campus, I'm not necessarily talking about roads in Ohio State. I'm talking about employers. Right now, since 2006 in the state of Ohio, it's been a law that every inside area of every employer has to be smoke-free. Okay? So, that's already a law, that's already established. What this is referring to would be the areas outside where people go and smoke. Those would be eliminated. That is what I'm talking about when I refer to a tobacco-free campus. Another thing that you can do is speak with multi-unit housing owners and managers and talk to them about smoke-free leases to protect the people in the unit next door that don't smoke, to protect them from the secondhand smoke that drips into their unit. Smoke-free public places would include places like the parks, square fair, Allen County Fairgrounds, Lima Land Motor Speedway, those types of areas. There's policies that you can put into place there. And then, we can also speak with healthcare providers and make sure that they are providing the most recent evidence-based treatment for tobacco dependents. So, these are all some of the areas that I'm, that I'm working with. Now, when you go to implement a policy, you can implement whatever parts of the policy that you want to. You can implement the most strict policy, or you can just implement pieces of parts of the policy. So, it can be however you want to make it. Like I said before, for the tobacco-free campus policy, no tobacco use anywhere on the property, including vehicle and parking space. This would be similar to the policies that Lima Memorial and St. Rita's Medical Center No tobacco use in company vehicles, and you can include chewing tobacco, or you don't have to include chewing tobacco. You can do it however you want. This also includes the dress code because if the person comes back to work and smells of smoke, there can be, that can be considered a violation. But however, the employees may use nicotine replacement products, and you would want that to be part of the policy. Now, when I talk to people about these policies, the first concern everybody has is how are you going to enforce something like that? Everybody thinks we can't possibly enforce anything like that. However, if the policy is written very clearly, and the more simple the policy, the better. So, if the policy is very clear, it's easier to enforce. It's enforced similarly to any of the policies in the dress code. If you do go to something like this, you would want to do a lot of education to all of the employees so that you would have everyone on board and supportive. And like I said, 80% of those smokers want to quit. So, often, the policy is self-enforcing because it's the smoker's reason to try quitting again. I've talked to several smokers who've said, you know what? If you implemented a tobacco-free policy here on my campus, I would probably try to Part of the policy would include assistance in quitting. You would want to make sure that you offer the employees nicotine replacement therapy, refer them to the company's EAP program because it is a very stressful time when a person's trying to quit. Ensure that the employee is aware of any insurance coverage or counseling services that are covered in the insurance plan. And send a very clear message that you want to help the tobacco users. These are just some examples of employers in Allen County who already have tobacco-free campuses. Of course, the hospitals, LACCA, Health Partners of Western Ohio, the Health Department, the Lima Family YMCA, Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, Allen County Regional Planning, Trinity United Methodist Church, Spencerville Schools, and starting January 1st, the campuses of Lima, OSU, and Rhodes State. Implementing a tobacco-free campus sends a very clear message that you take the health of your employees very seriously. It also sends a message that the city is conscious of the way that they are saving the taxpayers' money. Other options that can be implemented to decrease tobacco use rates include increasing tax rate for the tobacco product. These kinds of policies are known to decrease youth initiation. Smoke-free parks, smoke-free multi-unit housing, and the smoke-free outdoor events that I already mentioned. We, as Mayor Berger mentioned, we do have community support for this. We have members of the Activate Allen County Leadership Team here. Thank you very much for coming and supporting me. Lima Family YMCA supports, supports these, Lima Memorial, St. Rita's, Health Partners, the Health Department, West Ohio Food Bank. These are all companies or facilities that have members on the Activate Allen County Leadership Team. There is also Tobacco-Free Coalition that we meet and work towards these goals. We have representatives from the fairgrounds, from the city parks, from the college campuses, from physicians' offices. So, there is a lot of support in the community for these types of policies. As I said at the beginning, Allen County was rated as 83 out of 88 for health behaviors, and one of the health behaviors that they rated was tobacco use. So, unfortunately, we're at the low end of the totem pole there, so we'd like to move that up a couple notches. In order to do this work, the work needs to start now because it is a very slow process. It's lots of steps. Like I said, the most effective strategy is policy change, and the goal is improved health outcomes and decreased burden on the taxpayer. I believe that the future generations of Allen County deserve a healthier environment, and I want to thank you for allowing me the time to go over the facts and data, and I appreciate your attention and concern for this issue. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I have a couple of questions there. Since I've been in different seminars, they always have different questions, answers to why in a low-income area we always have a high volume of smokers.
Well, the, it goes along with their level of education also. Those who have a GED or high school-level education or below also have higher rates of smoking, and with the higher education rates, the smoking rates go down.
And you know, as we came out to seminar too, so, yeah, it's just the same as theirs, and it was education, GED, and all that. RJ Reynolds still putting money out from the lawsuit? Are you guys seeking that money from him, from that lawsuit back there?
In the state of Ohio, they, we had that funding for several years. However, several years back, that, that source of funding was shut down by the governor and put, the funding was put into the governor's general fund. So, as of right now, the state of Ohio has zero in source funding for tobacco control.
Last but not least, evaporation cigarette that you see people smoking, is that bad for your health or what?
The e-cigarettes have a lot of controversy yet, and the FDA has not brought forth a final ruling on them. Myself, as a certified tobacco treatment specialist, I have to follow the guidelines of the FDA, and right now, they are saying that they are not a safe or effective way to to quit smoking. So, in short, the answer is, no, they're not safe or effective.
Now, how could I hit my area pretty tough on about smoking? You have literature I can pass out. What kind of, I know we can talk about commercials, but hit the young folks. I know Campbell does not do the commercials no more, to cut back on commercials. What can we do to hit them pretty hard, letting them know that it's bad to smoke?
Absolutely.
Living in urban development area.
Absolutely. Part of the grant from the CDC is a media campaign, and you will be seeing media campaigns towards the younger kids to avoid initiation of smoking. But they've done studies over the years of, like, like I said, what the most effective way to decrease smoking was, and all of the education that they have in, in the schools and all of this stuff is not as effective as the policies.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. DeRosa.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Next is the committee report from the Human Resources Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee report is part of the packet tonight. The outcomes, I think, was a discussion of the process, and I, I believe it was illuminating for everybody. I move that this committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion, the second, is that the committee report for the Human Resources Committee be received, filed, and approved. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 169-13.
Removing special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Wyndham, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 169-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 169-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
If I could, have Ms. Amy Odom come forward, please, real quick. On page fourteen, about halfway down, even though this is not my word, I believe it's Ms. Adams' word, Franklin Street and Harrison Street, they're taxing the same, well, I shouldn't say taxing, they are, there's a fine, and it's the exact same property, but we still have not got clarification on the address or who is to pay that.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm looking through the paper.
Page fourteen of thirty-one. It's seventy-four sixty-one on both of those. Has no address clarification, and I don't know who we need to go after to get this. The group of men that have been responsible for this have asked several times for clarification on this, and they have not received it. They've been two years working on a project to redevelop that church, and they really want to get this paid off, and we, they need to know, is it them, or is it Harrison, or is it Franklin, or is it what?
Seventy-four sixty-one, zero Franklin Street. There is no, probably no address because it is a lot number, so therefore, it may be part of that. If the titled, we always list the text mailing address, rather, of the property. So, if it is Saint James Christian Methodist, it is indeed associated with that property. So, if that's, if you're seeing a parcel number, you're seeing a name, that name is the titled property owner, and indeed, that is theirs. If anyone has, I've not been contacted by anyone from that group.
Robert Lewis.
Some time ago, but nothing frequently.
Jim Benjamin.
Correct. No. I've had one contact some time ago from this group, but if they would like to, I mean, I can provide this information to them on who is responsible. We can show them where their, the county states their property lines are. The city does not do survey work. We only send notices based upon what the county auditor and county treasurer show as the title owner of property.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
Just a comment. Reverend Benjamin was in to see me some months ago, asked about whether the city was willing to forgive those charges, and there's a combination of charges. There's past due taxes, which the city does not control. There's then the charges for code enforcement-related upkeep and the like. And my response to him was that we needed to understand the totality of what they're doing there. I mean, I understand there's a group of men working to renovate that. The question of who's going to be the long-term owner, what their intentions are to invest, all of that, I think, needs to be presented in a, a way that can be considered, and then, if it makes sense for us to bring forward a recommendation to you all for forgiveness, we will do that. But at this point, it's all very sketchy and good intentions, but nothing that is formal so that at the point at which we can all someday look back and say, did the group perform or not? I mean, there has to be a basis on which to make a judgment about forgiving these costs rather than just an informal conversation.
So, I, you know, Mr. Lo, I would invite a member of the group, if they have a business plan, if they have, you know, specific questions, I would be happy to sit down and discuss it with them.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 169-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 170-13.
Removing property maintenance assessments on certain parcels of real estate in the city of Wyndham, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 170-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 170-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 170-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 171-13.
Amending the 2013 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that ordinance 171-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 171-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 170-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 172-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a local public agency agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to enable the city to accept, expend, administer, and draw down funds for the all-Lima Main Street bike lanes project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer. I move that ordinance number 173-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 173-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I have one question, Mr. Elstro. I know it says bike lanes. Does it have anything in this project that involves traffic circles? Just a yes or no is all I need.
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 173-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 174-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Perry Protec for the purchase and installation of a networked door access control system.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 174-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 174-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 174-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 175-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Generator Systems Incorporated.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 175-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 175-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 175-13 has been handled, has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 176-13.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the installation of emergency generators.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 176-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 176-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 176-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 177-13.
Authorizing the mayor to submit four applications to the Ohio Public Work Commission requesting state-issue one funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 177-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 177-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 176-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 177-13.
Authorizing the mayor to submit four applications to the Ohio Public Work Commission requesting state-issue one funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 177-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 177-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 177-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 178-13.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for demolition of 134-140 West Circular Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 178-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 178-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 177-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 178-13.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for demolition of 134-140 West Circular Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 178-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 179-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 179-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 180-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Kentucky Deal Holdings Inc. for the sale of three city-owned parcels of land located at Kibbe and Main Streets.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 180-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 180-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 180-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 181-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with ACI Construction Company, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 181-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 181-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nefer.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Ordinance 181-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Miscellaneous business. Mr. Nefer.
Just two items this evening. The first, I want to refer an issue to the Community and Economic Development Committee that I think we vaguely visited a few years ago, but I want to bring it up, especially I believe a perception exists in the city amongst a number of residential property investors that the city is targeting them upon transfer of real estate, either at sheriff's sale or public auction or whatever that mode of purchase is. And if we were looking at business or generally a commercial property, I think a lot of times we allow those properties to submit a plan to the city and say, hey, we're going to invest this in the property and here's what our plans are. You know, middle of summer, if you take a property that has a roof issue, I'm not sure that you could get that, get a roofer out and actually a roof put on in the period of time in which our city ordinance or city code actually allows you to come into compliance. So I would like to see us look, and I think at the time I recommended that we give investors of these properties 30 days to submit a plan to the city, especially for major, not for grass, but for structural issues, roof, foundation and such, rather than just, you know, the day that they purchase a property, the clock's running or the clock's ticking on them being charged with fines. So I'd like to refer that issue to the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
So I can restate that you're looking at the, a review of the compliance timelines?
Just for structural issues, not for grass and weeds and trash, but for structural issues on new purchases within the city.
Okay, thank you. The motion and the second is to refer to the Community and Economic Development Committee, the issue of a review of the compliance timeframes for structural issues and citations.
Specifically.
Specifically for.
Related to new purchases.
New purchases, okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. President.
Ms. Adams. I didn't call for discussion. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Yeah, I might call Ms. Odom up, because I thought there was a process in place where extensions can be given or, you know. So it's all right with you.
That's fine. I was just going to let it be discussed at committee, but briefly.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Neper, I welcome the opportunity to discuss it so people can be educated. But the reality is, at the time that a property transfers, they are given an acceptance responsibility form. And when they sign that form, if they need an extension, all they need to do is contact the council, the, excuse me, the inspector to make sure that an extension is granted. The purpose of doing that is requiring by city ordinance, an acceptance responsibility form is to make sure that the new owners are aware it is under violation and to make the city aware who the new owner is. There is always an opportunity to talk to the inspector and get an extension of time for that. So that does exist, but if you want further discussion of that, we're available to do so.
I'm willing to withdraw my motion. I just would ask, yeah, just again, I think that perception exists out there. It'd be nice.
Sure.
Maybe if there's a way to publicize that a little bit better.
Absolutely. In fact, I had a discussion this morning where I would like the opportunity to readdress the West Central Realtors Association on this. We used to meet with them about yearly or so, and it's been a while. I think there's new realtors and new people in the game who just may not understand how the processes work, so we're working on doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
Real quick, can it be denied?
The extension?
The extension.
The extension. It can if it is an unfit for habitation situation, meaning if it is so heinous and if someone is in light of public or safety is involved, it may be denied. It's extremely rare.
Any further discussion? You want to withdraw the motion?
Yeah, I'm willing to withdraw the motion.
I'd be happy to report on progress we've made on educating folk.
That'd be great.
I'll second your withdrawal.
All right, thank you. Anything further, Ms. Adams?
No, thank you.
Mr. McLean. I'm sorry, Mr. Neber.
One more. And then I also wanted to thank the city engineer. The parking lot on North Main, that is actually a county-owned parking lot that we saw in the newspaper, the, it started to fall through the ground. The alleys attached to that are actually city-owned property. And when the county invested and put a new parking lot in, the city was, I'm told, very amenable and helpful and stepped right up and helped pave those alleys, alleyways as well, which were the ingress egress to that parking lot. So way to work together on that, and I think the end result, if you drive down North Main Street, it really does brighten up that area. That's an area that was in need of attention for a long time and looks great now that it's gotten it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neper. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remind everyone that the FOP's got their annual pancake day coming up on October 5th. I'm sure you can find tickets. There's plenty of people to sell them, but if you need some, I'm sure the FOP's got some. I got a couple of issues. One, I'd like to refer to council as a whole to discuss and review the Rule of Ten with the administration, the law director and the civil service board, so that we're all on the same page in understanding that rule. I'd like to make a motion for referral.
Second. Okay. So the motion and the second is to refer the issue of the Rule of Ten as it applies to civil service to council as a whole. Correct?
That's correct.
Is that right?
Okay.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
The second one, I'd like also to refer to the council as a whole to talk about the purchasing agreement that we have when it's limited to employment or labor. What we're finding is, you know, when we increase that limit, they're able to actually employ someone, unemploy them, employ them back if they want to, and stay within that agreement. And I don't think that was my intent when I voted on that purchasing agreement. So I'd like to discuss that with council as a whole and see if there's a way we could maybe tighten it up a little bit or better explanation when they do hire people. But I can make a motion to refer to council as a whole to discuss it.
Second.
Motion, the second is to refer the purchasing policy as it regards to contract labor.
Contract labor.
To the council as a whole. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Anything else, Mr. McLean?
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Mr. Lowe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Starting off, I'd like to kind of tip my hat to Mr. Gus Mitchell, who brought some jazz to the rooftop this past weekend. We had a world-renowned person, Mr. D. Major. He did an excellent job. It was a very nice performance and it was put on well, right here in downtown Lima, on top of the roof. So for anyone who had a part in helping Mr. Gus Mitchell bring this group up, that came from out of Atlanta, thank you very much. It was a very nice turnout. I think they had a great deal of support and I'm looking forward to them coming back to Lima again. Spent a couple of hours with them today, actually got to play with them. Nice group of gentlemen. Second thing I would like to speak on is, some of the residents downtown Lima, specifically 72 Town Square, are owners of pets. And they're allowing them to use the restroom in the downtown area lawns. And our maintenance man can't even cut the grass or stepping over piles. I spoke with a lady today. She pretty much told me where I could go and what I could do. But at the end of the day, I'm going to keep an eye out for it. I've talked with the manager. She agreed. They're continuously feeding the cats. They're continuously throwing food out there. I don't know what needs to happen outside of me going to just report to people. And we'll go from there. But it's not, I don't think it's fair to the individuals that had to do the maintenance around here. You want your lawn, you want the city's property to look as nice as it can. We just spent a lot of money on the streetscape downtown Lima, and we got dogs out there doing what they do. And the individuals and the owners can't even bring a bag and take care of the situation. I think that's very disrespectful. While we're talking about disrespect, about, well, just a couple of minutes ago, actually, topic choice seems to dictate the time limits of individuals at the podium. And whether we agree or we disagree with what an individual has to say at the podium, the rules have been set for three minutes. But less than a month ago, we had Bob Horton stand here for eight and a half minutes, and the gavel was never hit. And if we're going to do for one, I think we need to do for all, whether we agree or disagree with what the individual at the podium is saying. If we're going to keep it at three minutes, we need to keep it at three minutes. The other thing that I would like to say is like, I would like to make a motion that the Neighborhood Concerns Committee meets on October the 7th at 5:30. And this meeting will be concerning the Lima Astronomical Society's needs for improvement on their building.
Second.
You don't need a motion for a committee meeting, do you?
He needs to refer the issue, though.
I would like to refer to the Neighborhood Concerns Committee.
It's not.
Can you restate the motion?
I would like to refer the topic of Astronomical Society's needs for improvement to Neighborhood Concerns Committee.
Any second.
Second.
So the motion is to refer the needs of the Astronomical Society improvements to the Neighborhood Concerns.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Their needs for improvement.
And there's a motion and a second under discussion. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Neber.
I believe it's city-owned properties, I think, what Mr. Lowe is getting at.
That was going to be my question.
Yes, it is.
Is it a city-owned, I know it's in or adjacent to Schoonover Park.
It is a city-owned building.
Is it a city-owned building?
Yes, sir.
It is.
It is. Okay, I didn't know.
You're talking specifically about the Observatory.
The Observatory?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay.
Now, the equipment, this came up some years ago. Their telescope was stolen. And I think our insurance may have covered that.
Right, it was.
But if you're talking about the building, the building is a city park facility, correct?
Yes, sir. They weren't so much, well, not to discuss what's going to be discussed in the meeting, but they had a break-in. They did damage the telescope. Telescope was replaced through insurance. The individuals that's running it now, they're looking at paint, maintenance, the flooring inside is really bad. They just want to talk about what can they do or what can we do to help them improve it.
Okay.
It's known on a national level, and we're one of, we're very few that have one.
Okay, all right. I was just, that was my question, okay, as to what the realm of it was, whether we actually had any jurisdiction over. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
That's it.
That is, all right.
It'll be October 7th, 5:30.
Mr. Teppin?
One item this evening. The Boulevard Neighborhood Association will meet tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at the Community Resource Center, formerly Fire Station Four at 1440 West Spring. The guest speaker will be Connie Miller from Web Insurance, and she will be sharing and sharing information, answering questions regarding the new health insurance regulations that will soon be implemented under Obamacare. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few things this evening. Midway East Neighborhood will be meeting Thursday, September 19th at 7:00 PM. And then upcoming on the 21st, Saturday of September, big day of serving. And recommend that anyone interested, contact the pastor at Forest Park United Methodist Church. Registration that day, the 21st is at 6:30 with the start at 8:00 AM and assignments. I would also like, Mr. President, if I could call up Mr. Mike Caprella to give us an update. I had a question for him from a resident from Hope Neighborhood Meeting. Her husband was out at the reservoir and had some dogs run up on him. The people didn't have them on leashes and asked if there was a rule that they should be on leashes. And he informed me of some other new items going up.
Mr. President, Ms. Adams, thanks for asking that question, because honestly, this year I think we've had more calls about dogs at the reservoirs running loose and getting in the water, swimming, doing all things that they're not supposed to be doing, not being on a leash. I think more calls on that than I did on people wanting to sit on the benches, so. I had to throw that in there, sorry. So we, if you walk, a lot of people walk the reservoirs, a lot of people have dogs. If you have your dog, he has to be on a leash. We didn't have signage there, so in conjunction with the Parks Department, we have purchase signs that will advise the public about the requirement to have their dogs on a leash if they have them around the reservoir. Those will be hopefully either this week or next week be placed around the, all the reservoirs. And every dog on a leash, keep it out of the water and clean up after it. That's.
And then if a resident sees a dog that's not on a leash, the steps is to call the LPD that would then contact a.
Park ranger.
Or park ranger.
Right, yes. And the park rangers are aware of this, and they're interacting with the public. If they see them, they talk to them. They let them know of the requirement. And so trying to do it in a kind way, I guess, but bottom line is, you know, there is concern out there among the public about the dogs running without being on a leash, so.
Okay, thank you. And that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
I've got a couple of things here. First of all, we don't, I like to echo a little bit what Jesse has said about the jazz on the roof. That was sponsored by Sherwin-Community Center and Hall Food Bank. We appreciate everyone coming out. This is a way we are working very hard to fund the center. We are taking other avenues, and that was a great avenue, and all the people who did donations. And Gus did a lot of donations for the project to go through in the Raven. We thank all the guys. John Hafey, thank you guys so much, because we want to have that doubt. We showing our hometown pride. And I didn't get to make it because I have poison ivies, so I want, I didn't want to give everybody poison ivies there.
Just Teresa.
I know, I got to cover. Teresa don't catch it. But that's the deal, right? But that's great, though. Ms. Balling just left, and I understand her concern. And I have people in the ward that we need to look at that sometime. A lot of folks have had, the contractors working on their houses, they're having problems right now. And my understanding, they have a bad roof. We are going to try, I'm going to try, and some other folks that I know trying to fix that roof for her. If she was still here, I'd go by their house, let them know what we're going to do. Because I know her mother's pretty old and they can't, we're getting ready to get winter time coming. And we're going to try to get someone to help us fix that roof, and it will get done before winter. And I'm going to make a promise to that, because I don't want to see no one, no matter what side of the city they live in. I work for everybody. Someone like that with a whole main roof and can't get it fixed with an elderly mother living there, I think that's not right. The cat problem, I know we got traps around. I know the last time we talked about it, some of the folks was talking about it. If I know where to get the traps at, some folks saying they'll take the trap. I talked to one, the person that is involved in the project. They said the problem is people are taking the traps. Now, if you take a trap at your house, these cost some money, a lot of money. And, but we need traps, and some of the folks in the area said, in the Lincoln Place area, they said they have a problem with cats. So we're going to try to get some traps out there, and you're responsible for the trap and getting that done. Also, we're going to try again this year, kid of the month, and these schools can come from any kid, any school they can come from. This will, and we always look at the kids, no matter what your grade point average is. That's what I'm looking at now. I want the kid good opportunity to come to city council, and it worked out real good for the last three or four years. Some of the kids a little shy, don't want to come up. A lot of teachers have said that's great. Kids is our future. I always bring that up all the time. When she says something about the smoking. Uneducated, any folks, eighth grade level, GED, them the ones that come at it. And I appreciate her so much bringing that up, on smoking, because that's some of the stuff we're working on in our community there, because we have a lot of smoking there, and we need to try to work on it and cut down the expense for health issues there. Also, I appreciate, I'm just going to call Dave's name out, he'll like his last name called out. Davey did a great job on painting the house. He had a code enforcement problem, and Dave just rolled his sleeve up and just did it. He's from Erie, Ohio. I appreciate you doing that. You know, it's good folks that continue helping, and that's what I love doing, just continue helping people that need help. They need help in their neighborhood. Also, I have 55 code enforcement violations, and they all wrote down. I gave some of the folks opportunity to take care of the problem. And that's where I work. I don't report it. I was, I go to your door, knock on your door and let you know that the problem is there and what can we do to help you get that problem solved. And I'm very, very happy. I drove this past Sunday around to check on them, and 35 of them was up the park. I mean, no more cars standing outside, and I'm glad we brought that car problem up, because people's getting the notice of this. You know, this car sat out there, she got it out the way. Get the garbage cans up front. Garbage cans wouldn't have been in the back. They can't stay out the whole weekend. The park ranger will go around and give you a ticket. So we're not going to allow these garbage cans to outpass the weekend. They get them Friday, you need to get them Saturday morning. So we got understanding on a lot of stuff, but I appreciate you guys. I know some of you guys, you'll be watching, and I ain't going to call your names out, but I appreciate you guys taking care of your problem. And that make everybody happy. Your neighbor's very happy about it. You're happy what you done, because you want to continue beautifying your neighborhood. You want to see good things come to the neighborhood, just like she said. If it's a health issue in your area, it's hard for economic development to come to town. So we need to continue working very, very hard on doing that, you know. Let's make it, make the sixth world a beautiful place, and we're going to continue moving in that direction, no matter what it take. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Ms. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. President. One item, the Westgate Neighborhood Association will have its summer picnic on September 15th at Chamberlain Huck Reedy. At 6:00, did I say that? And Chamberlain Huck Reedy will be providing the picnic, so Westgate people, come on out. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Townsend. I don't have anything.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Relative to the smoking issue, I think that the presentation tonight was intended to trigger some discussion about what, if anything else, the city should be doing with its properties. We currently have.
We currently have and have in place policies affecting city employees which restrict smoking in the buildings, restrict smoking and use of other tobacco products in city vehicles, and we also provide through our health plan a set of generous approaches to assisting people, not just the employees, but other members of the family, recognizing that if you're in a household where several people are smoking, it can make quitting that much more difficult.